Committee meeting, April 30th, 2018. Thank you, sorry. Call to order, the Anderson High School Branding and Mascot Committee meeting, April 30th, 2018, 7:00 PM. Would you please all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Oh, there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Stanley. Mr. Smith is running a little late, he'll be here, is this on? Mr. Smith is running a little late, he'll join us momentarily. Safety briefing, exits there and there, also over here. We've got a full room, so please make note of those exits. Welcome everyone, we're going to be here for two hours tonight and two hours only. We will get in as many speakers as we can, I don't want to take much of your time because this is your time this evening. There's not going to be any discussion with the members of the committee, we're here to listen. You're all going to be allowed to speak, we're going to start with Forest Hills residents because I think Forest Hills residents ought to have the first opportunity to speak here. If we finish with Forest Hills residents, we'll then go to the non-residents. We'll alternate between those in favor and against changing the nickname and the logo. Be respectful of each other, do not interrupt each other, no shouts of approval or disapproval, no interruptions of any kind. And keep in mind, we're going to be here for two hours, at two minutes each, maybe that will give us the opportunity to hear from 60 speakers. But if you're interrupting each other and talking over each other, we won't get to that many. If you go fast and it's less than two minutes, we might get to more. It's going to be up to you all. Remember, if you're interrupting each other, you're really taking up your own time, we'll get to fewer people. Two minutes each, I will enforce it as I have in other meetings. I apologize in advance, I'm not being rude, I'm just trying to keep it so that we keep moving and everybody gets an opportunity. Ms. Barber, you wanted to say something?
Just quickly, I'm Elizabeth Barber, I'm a member of both the committee and also the Board of Education. And, oh, okay, sorry. I'm a member of both the committee and the Board of Education. And I wanted to first of all thank you all for coming. I know many of you have put a lot of time and thought into the things that you're going to bring to this meeting tonight and we thank you for that. And I also want to encourage everyone to take this as an opportunity to listen. The Board and the committee has been fortunate to be listening for the last few weeks, we've been hearing from all of you, hundreds and hundreds of emails. This is this community's chance to listen, here where everyone is coming from and to be able to respect and hear everyone, so, thanks.
All right, first up, Cheryl Lynn Looney.
Cheryl Lynn Looney.
First up, Melissa Buffman.
Melissa Buffman, please.
I don't think this one's working.
I'm just going to have to hold it, I'm sorry.
I'll just hold it. Some might say, why do you care? Didn't you go to Turpin? Yes, I did. My brothers and I are proud 95, 96, and 97 Spartans. My husband, his sisters and nieces, all Spartans. But what they didn't know is my parents are 67 and 69 Redskins. What you don't know is that I'm a mom raising three young boys, three future Anderson Redskins. Elizabeth, you share concerns about what you are teaching your kids if you choose to keep the Redskins name. I can tell you that I am striving to teach my boys self-confidence, independence, honesty, respect, teamwork, and pride. I am teaching them to be leaders, not followers of the trend, as Mr. Fruman stated, as a reason for change. My heart is heavy for this community as we deal with this issue yet a fourth time. I believe this community is a family and what affects one affects us all. Whether Redskins or Spartan, this will affect us emotionally and financially. Can we afford to take that risk? Is the school board willing to risk the next levy over this issue? If so, a $10,000 donation from our Board President won't put a dent in what it'll take to revive this district. I challenge the Board to stand up for the 90% that love our Redskins. Show our community and students we are not willing to back down to the 10% threatening our peaceful community. Start a trend and stand up to these bullies for a fourth and final time. Keep our Redskins and have confidence that your community has your back.
Joan Gilmore.
Thank you. This is a test. Hi, everyone, thanks so much for this opportunity to hear each other. I would like to say that change is hard, change is hard. But we need to go ahead and be a progressive community and think about the words that we use and how it affects other people. I love Anderson Township and I want to be proud of where I live and not be ashamed of it. I really think we could come up with a better word for our teams and ones that the kids could get behind too, not just the parents. I want to thank the school board for being the people who can usher this change through peacefully. And I know in your heart you're going to do the right thing. Thank you.
Mardi White.
Weeks ago, when the Anderson Redskins logo controversy arose yet again, my overwhelming feeling had to do with tradition. After all, I'm a Redskin. It means so much to me that my daughter was going to graduate a Redskins. Something that continued to resonate with me though was that in the committee meetings, Elizabeth expressed her personal struggle, one that I share with my child as well. And her concern was what will her children glean if we keep this logo? Thirteen years ago, I added to what Jim Fruman said is the growing diversity of Anderson Township when I adopted my daughter who was born in China. The real meaning of diversity in our community and what the Redskins logo represents hit home for me days ago. You see, I believe now more than I ever have that this Native American logo is what represents our diversity. Whether we are Native American, Chinese, Latino, African-American, or Caucasian, this Redskins logo invites and includes them all. I would submit the message that our Redskins logo sends is that we are first and foremost a strong community. We are diverse and we're not going to allow divisive names and slanderous words even when the minority of outsiders try to assign them to us. Let's not teach our words, our children, just with our words but with our actions and come behind the Redskins logo which exemplifies the very diversity that is Anderson. I will grant you friends, words absolutely matter, but context gives them meaning. As a school district, why wouldn't we educate rather than eradicate?
Michelle Wall.
For those who don't know me, I have lived here for roughly 25 years. I am a 2003 graduate. I have two little girls I'm raising in this community and a nephew who will soon be entering Anderson High School as well. My statement is short and sweet. When I was a teenager, I can remember sitting in restaurants as my grandfather would loudly declare that he had quote, "a lot of good N-word friends." Obviously, I'm paraphrasing. I vividly remember wanting to crawl under the tables to hide. My point is simply this. He spoke this way because when he grew up, it was acceptable, whereas I was painfully aware of how unacceptable it was now. Things were different in his eyes because he grew up in a different time. However, with that word, just as with the one we discussed tonight, times changed. We learned the ugliness associated with that word and we decided to do better. No amount of good intentions or pride can change the history or definition of either word. In the same instance, changing the logo cannot and should not change the pride you feel in our community. We have so much more to be proud of. We have an amazing community whose values are not well reflected by leaving a word with such an ugly history in place.
Mike Belcourt.
I am here tonight because I am saddened and outraged. Sadened because we are even here, that even though the majority of the supposed offended race isn't actually offended by the Redskins name, we have made this issue. I'm saddened because the school district that I love so much and moved my family back to five years ago has become a sham, a laughingstock to the outside community. Between sex scandals, construction debacles, and this debate, this district looks lost to outsiders. I'm saddened because my own son was silenced by an Anderson, a teacher in Anderson for wanting to share his opinion in support of the Redskins name. He was talked over, ignored, while others with a different opinion were given their due. Is this what we want to teach our students about handling issues? Sadened and proud because this same freshman told me last night that it was more important for me to be here speaking than watching him play baseball against Turpin tonight. But I mostly am outraged, outraged because my son is going to school trying to learn in conditions that almost everyone in this room would find unlivable. But yet, our kids are expected to thrive in them, expected to succeed in deplorable conditions. Don't get me wrong, I think everyone at Anderson has done a great job to persevere, but should they have to? Outraged because some are looking to eradicate the very history of the Native Americans in this land instead of educating our students about them. But mostly, I'm outraged at the leaders of this district. The very people that have been elected to make sure the safety and well-being of our students is top priority don't see it that way. Instead, they move this issue to the forefront. They build new offices for the district staff. Don't move the bus depot, don't fix parking. Does this sound like putting our students first? I challenge each and every one of you, we do not need to be spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on eradicating a logo. Instead, put that money where it needs to be, with our students. My family are Redskins and we will always be Redskins. Go Skins!
Sean P. Meti.
Hello, my name is Sean P. Meti and I am a third-generation graduate of Anderson High School as well as my brother who cannot be here this evening. I would also mention that my early relatives, great aunt and great uncle were amongst some of the first early staff of Anderson High School. I am here to speak in favor of changing the mascot of our high school. I hear the words "history" and "tradition" being used often in the argument for keeping the mascot. I would argue that both of these words have meaning, but only at a level of individual experience and perspective. My family and relatives have been in this community since the 1840s, almost 180 years. Since that time, this community has changed greatly. Our orchards are now homes and condominiums where some of you may live. I can guarantee that the older families in this community, given the opportunity, would have loved for it to remain how it was. Yet that is not how life works. Things change, quite often for the betterment of the individual, the community, and our species as a whole. Change is hard. It is not easy. We're not blind to the fact that it is not easy. But it is inevitable, much like death and taxes.
Monica Navy.
Hello, I'm Monica Navy, a freshman at Anderson High School. And this is my speech. If minority had their way, then Oklahoma would have to change their name. Oklahoma, meaning red, and Homa, meaning people, red people. You wouldn't change a state's name, would you? Just like you shouldn't change our Redskins. It is not racist. Racist is believing in racism. Racism is the doctrine that one's own racial group is superior or that a particular racial group is inferior to others. People say that they are here for majority. If they are here, they need to listen. Always listen to the louder voice. This country has always listened to both sides. Majority has always won. Majority wants to keep the Redskins. I have had less than a year to honor being a Redskins. Ever since elementary, I have respected the Redskins name. Once a Redskins, always a Redskins.
Danae Riggs.
No great two minutes doesn't have props, right? Thanks for being here, everybody, thanks for this opportunity to address you. My name is Danae, I am a graduate of Anderson High School, class of 1996. My family migrated from the South from deep, deep poverty through the hills of Appalachia to get here to Cincinnati with one primary goal of my father, which was to work at General Motors and to raise his four children in the Forest Hills School District. It was a great source of pride for him to be able to sacrifice for that long journey and lots of sacrifices were made for his four kids over the span of 1980 to my graduating year of 1996 for the four of us to graduate from Anderson High School. What I recall of my experience from Anderson was deeply rooted in tradition and had absolutely nothing to do with the word Redskins. I am not a Redskins, my family is not a Redskins, nor will we ever be. What we are though is a family rooted in tradition. I proudly wear my Pride of AHS pin. Mike Hall gave me this pin for speaking up about sex abuse survival at a sophomore awareness day in my 10th grade year. This ribbon, my sister wore all four years of her high school experience cheerleading my brother while he played football. Words matter. My daughter now, I'm raising a 16-year-old who is a sophomore at Anderson High School. Her skin is not the same color of mine although I biologically delivered her. And what I try to struggle with every day is understanding her shared and lived experience. See, that's the one thing, we're all experts in this room and I've seen a lot of facts, I've read more material about this than I probably should have in the last six months. The truth of the matter is, is we're all experts of our own experience, our own lived experience. And my lived experience is that it's time to move on from this racial slur. It's time to unify this community in something that we can all identify with that does not exclude but rather includes all people. It's time for Anderson as a district to step up its cultural competency and to do better for the children that we are raising. Thank you.
Ed Woods.
Good evening, Ed Woods, I've been here for 31 years. I'll just read this, "On April 16th, Jim offered $10,000 matching funds for rebranding the Redskins. This seemed too many to be inappropriate. On April 23rd, Jim wrote a letter..." Okay, sorry. "On April 23rd, Jim wrote a letter to the Ohio Ethics Commission. In that letter, I believe Jim misrepresented the facts that the cost of rebranding would be an estimated $150,000 in incremental costs. The last figure discussed at the committee meeting was $454,000. We would like to see where that incremental figure came from. This is likely grossly underestimated and considering the mess that the high school renovation is in, this money would be better spent elsewhere. The Ethics Commission advised Jim that he could legally contribute to personal..." I'm sorry. "Contribute personal funds to alleviate the rebranding costs. But what all this demonstrates is that Jim has an inherent bias towards changing the name and arguably why he created a board committee instead of a citizens committee. Jim selected and set the agenda for tonight's meeting, but please remember that Jim stated quote, 'majority vote is not the rule,' end quote and that quote, 'public commentary is not only unnecessary but it is repetitive.'" Those are quotes. "The board committee should be disbanded and cease an apparent agenda since this is an issue that doesn't affect just one school but the Forest Hills School District and all the residents of Anderson, this matter should be on a ballot. And whichever way it goes, that would be the Democratic solution instead of being manipulated by a select few. One more thing, Randy Smith twice suggested the name Shaunise. That won't work either, folks. Well, if anyone wants to really understand what's behind this movement..." Okay? Yes, I'm sorry, okay? "Please look at unsettlingamerica.com." Thank you, sir.
Chris Alexander.
I got the Alexander part right. This is intimidating. So I'm just going to read this. "When I became a licensed social worker in the state of Ohio, I had to sign a code of ethics that focused on six core values. One of those values is social justice. Specifically, it is my responsibility as a social worker to challenge social injustice. Ethically, it is my role as a social worker to pursue social change particularly with and on behalf of the vulnerable and oppressed individuals and groups of people. It is my role as a social worker to focus on social change efforts, on issues of discrimination and other forms of social injustice. Today, I stand before you in effort to promote cultural sensitivity and knowledge about oppression and cultural and ethnic diversity. With all of my heart, I believe that many of you here who have been affectionately termed the keepers are simply just a product of your time, environment, upbringing, and therefore cannot truly grasp how this term is offensive and ultimately a racial slur. I don't think most of you have ill or hurtful intentions. However, not understanding why or how it's offensive is no excuse to keep it. You have heard it time and time again over the years from multiple families in the Forest Hills community that this term is offensive. It hurts people. You don't have to get it to be respectful. You don't have to completely understand to say, 'we hear you. We want to ensure that Anderson High School is an inclusive and positive community for all.' Ultimately, what we do know is that refusing to change the name has not been working because as a community, we have arrived at the same crossroads time and time again. Please stop putting the community through this. We're really too small to be divided."
Dan Albers.
I would like to bring to your attention one of the speakers from our meeting last week, Mr. Humbert Shadowheart, who was so offended by a Redskins name that he's seen here in a Blackhawks jersey. You only need to do some research to find Shadowheart's stand-up comic routine on YouTube and see how not only is he not offended, but he has no problem slandering Native Americans. How many other people in attendance here that are posers have the same agenda? My agenda's always been clear. I broadcast for the Anderson Redskins football team for the last 27 years. That's close to 300 games. I do the home games and travel to the away games. In those 27 years, I've never come across one single person from a school or anybody that was offended by the Redskins name. A board member made a point in one of the past meetings how the name Redskins would hold student athletes back from possibly getting into schools due to the offensive nature of the name. I'm here to say that nothing could be further from the truth. My broadcasting to Redskins has not only enhanced my opportunities in broadcasting for Mount St. Joe, Cincinnati State, and UC Claremont. And not to mention that Anderson alumni Andrew Norwell and Greg Banz, who are very successful NFL careers, the Redskins name did not hold them back and it has not held me back. We live in a country that was built on democracy. The board members were voted to represent all of us, not just the select few. If you were to put to a vote and even take a poll and ask, all in favor of the Redskins, say aye?
Aye!
Let the community alumni, current student body decide. Put it to a vote and put it to rest.
Sue Wood.
My name is Sue Wood, I've been in the community for 45 years. What speaks to me about the mascot issue is the notion that as a township, we are not currently rolling out the welcome mat for all people. Clearly, there are some Native Americans who do not mind the use of the Redskins name, but there are many who do. How many organizations representing hundreds of tribes have to reach out to us? Should tradition overrule? Should we care about what other people think and feel? Can't we just be Anderson High School? Isn't the school itself really where tradition lies? For the most part, I doubt that current students give the nickname a second thought because, well, it's their school and of course, their school knows best. What impact does this have on our students? Isn't it our duty as adults to set a good example for our young people? Do we need to educate with global impact in mind before we send these promising kids out into the real world? Will they be well-prepared to work as team players in our increasingly diverse country? Or are we teaching them to stick to their guns and resist change at all cost? Hanging on to a nickname that many do consider to be offensive as defined by the Oxford Dictionary simply defies common sense. If we don't change now, when? One thing is certain, this is not going away. Voting against change today is simply delaying the inevitable. I think we all realize this. I know that the Branding Committee is working diligently to come to a decision. My hope is that our predominantly white community will unite to project an image of inclusiveness. We are in the spotlight now, let's use the opportunity to demonstrate kindness towards all. This is truly not about us, it's about... It's about the world in which we live. To know better is to do better. Native Americans have asked us to discontinue using the nickname. Shouldn't that be enough?
I have lived in Anderson Township most all of my life. I'm a graduate of McNich. My husband Turpin. We have three kids, two of whom have graduated from Anderson, one who will. It is not my will or intent to disrespect, mock, or defame anyone, and I don't believe that is what is happening here at Anderson High School. Our logo is not a caricature. It is a symbol of respect and pride. I recall the last time this issue came up, it was requested that we discontinue having a costumed character at school events. This has been done. I'm unsure if adding American Indian history into the curriculum came to be. If not, it should. That was a concern of Eunice Davidson, whom I spoke with today, of the Spirit Lake Tribe. She is afraid of the American Indian history being forgotten and lost in the name of political correctness. She spoke of the University of North Dakota and the eventual removal of their symbol of the Fighting Sioux. Because of this proud symbol was ripped away without a majority vote, but a unilateral decision by a small group, the university lost approximately a half a million in private donations that year. Subsequent years, they have lost $100 million per year, which meant several sports and liberal arts programs were cut. They can't sell the Fighting Hawks spirit wear. What would a similar effect have on Anderson High School? How many private donations does Anderson count on? Have you surveyed the students and alumni to find out what their wishes are? I have to live within a budget, and if this change means more money spent that we don't have, then this alone could be a reason to keep the Redskins. This issue is not to be a feather in your political caps.
Time's up.
I'm here tonight because I wanted to address a question that was brought up at the last branding meeting, and that was, what does this community want? Now, certainly, we are divided on this issue, but I think what we see here tonight shows that signs and shirts do not tell the whole story of what Anderson wants. I'm a parent of this community, and what I want is for that logo and name to change. I don't want to have to explain to my daughter one day why her high school uses a racial slur. And I don't want her...I know, it's not funny. And I don't want her to internalize that it is ever okay to use racial slurs. And I do not want her to learn that the stereotypical image currently used in Anderson High School in any way represents the realities of Indigenous people. Words matter, and this word, while not intended to, certainly evokes its violent history for far too many. You know, no matter what happens here in the next few months, this name is going to change one day. And that's why it's imperative that Forest Hills be a leader in this change, not forced into some decision. Why reinvest money in a logo that no longer serves us? Why reinvest money in a team name that we would not use if we were opening this high school today? I am not an outside agitator, and I am not an angry activist. I am your neighbor, and I care about this community, and that's why I want us to live up to its promise of diversity and inclusion. We cannot live up to that promise with this name. The board stated at the beginning that this issue would be decided based on what is best for our children, and that means the current and future students in Anderson. And what is best for them is to retire a controversial and distracting logo that clearly no longer represents all of us.
I would like to start with a scripture verse. 1 John 3:18. Children, let us not love in word or speech, but in deed and truth. Deed, or action, the administration, staff, students, and alumni have always regarded the Redskins name with respect, honor, and dignity. Truth, 75% to 90% of all Native Americans regard the word Redskins with honor, respect, and dignity. Action, many Native American groups have emailed, mailed, and spoken to the board about how they want us to keep the Redskins name to continue their heritage. Truth, if you take away the Redskins name, many Native Americans say this is offensive to them. You are eradicating their heritage. Action, at committee and board meetings, the majority of residents and attendants are for keeping the Redskins name. Truth, you do not know what the community as a whole wants because as a committee, you have not done your due diligence to find out. Action, the students do not want it changed. Truth, as a committee, you have not asked the current students what they want. Action, the construction is overbudgeted by $1 million. To change the logo would cost over $600,000. Truth, the school district does not have the funds to do this. Where will it come from? Not me. Action, this committee is being bullied by those who are not Native Americans and by a group that does not proportionally represent most Native Americans. Truth, this committee needs to be recommended by the board by a vote of seven to zero not to change the Redskins name or logo. This is the right decision for our Native American friends. Go Redskins!
My name is Megan Howe. My family and I just moved to Anderson Township about a year and a half ago, primarily for the school district. We moved here. My husband is from northeastern Ohio and is a lifelong Cleveland Indians fan, so we're not strangers to a mascot debate. That being said, I was not prepared for the unattractive vitriol that I have observed in the neighborhoods of Anderson recently. And in this debate, there's two things that I just keep coming back to that might be simplistic in terms of what everyone else is talking about. I don't want to touch on everything else, but my first thing is, if a new school were to be created tomorrow, grade school, high school, college, when it came to naming a mascot, logo, exactly, what would the logo be? Would it be Redskins? Would it be Indian? Would those even be up for discussion? The answer is, of course it wouldn't, because we know better. It wouldn't happen. So why are we even talking about this? That should be our answer, right? I mean, let's move on. The second thing I want to address is the history and pride that's often evoked. When debating the current mascot, high school can be really amazing, memory-filled time. There's all sorts of nostalgic events and milestones, sports, cars, young romance, and, you know, it's the best time of so many people's lives. There's good and bad, but that's what it is. It's memories. Are we attaching memories to a mascot? Is that...because that's what it is. Is that...how much does a high school mascot validate those memories and experiences? Thank you.
Sorry.
Starks. Leanne Starks.
Good evening. I stand before you tonight as a proud Redskins, class of '93, a resident, and more importantly, a mother. This past week, my son, in the front row here, Chandler, was met with a racial slur on the wall at Nagel Middle School. Before I go any further, our school district has rallied behind my son like you cannot imagine. Yeah, yep. I bring this to your attention in comparison to the claims that Redskins is racist. These two terms simply don't compare. You will hear a lot of different perspectives tonight. I promise you this: no one in this room will stand up here before you and claim that the N-word carries honor and pride. No one has ever said this. You will hear from proud alumni, students, and residents who respect and honor our logo, who take pride in our tradition. It is time to bring our community together on all issues. We can start with education about race, and I ask you to listen, as the charge to you as a board is simply education. We must educate our kids. We must educate our teachers on the responsibility of being proud with what we stand for. Education is the only solution. I have reached out personally to each member of our school board to start this conversation. I personally want to assist in bringing our community back together. This week was eye-opening for our family, and I believe everything happens for a reason. We must stop the division among us through education. It's time to take a stand. It's time to take charge of the most pressing issues through transparency from our board, through support with the community, and with education for all parties involved. I ask specifically that you consider putting this to bed. The community's...thank you.
Good evening. My name is Heather Halloran, and I'm a 1974 graduate from Anderson High School. Whoa. I had so many things that I wrote down over the last few days that I wanted to address to all of you guys there in that sea of orange. But after listening as long as I have, I just...I first learned of social studies when I was in the fifth grade at Newtown Elementary. After listening to my teacher stroll up and down the desk aisles espouting liberty, the escape from tyranny, the prosecution from freedom of religion, and how wonderful the birth of this new nation was, and how great the United States of America was, I raised my hand. What I wrote was much longer than this, but because we're on a time constraint, I cannot...I have to shorten it. One little girl raised her hand, and I asked the teacher, who came behind me quickly, swooped in like a hawk, and said, "Yes, dear, what's your question?" And in a fifth-grade voice, with an 11-year-old mentality, I asked, "Well, you know, if we all came here to escape persecution, and they were chopping off people's heads, and people couldn't pray, and, you know, it was so terrible over there, then how come we did the same thing to the Indians that we came here to get away from?" She patted me on top of the head. Her smile changed to a smirk, and she said, "Because they're savages, silly girl." That was the first time I ever heard the word savage in a school. This is about education. This is about children.
I'm sorry? You don't want to speak now? I have no promises. If you want to speak...
Could we all stand now, all of us? And please sing the alma mater.
(Singing) By the fair and mighty alma mater, strong and such and bold. Stands our worthy alma mater, for it's to me all. Give us courage, guard our fortunes, ever loyal be. And whose town our noble high school, our three friends to thee.
Thank you. See, we can be united.
It's hard to do this. Good evening. My name is Anita Bryant, and I'm a resident of Anderson Township. I have a sophomore at Anderson High School. I have been an avid volunteer at Summit Elementary, Nagel Middle School, Turpin High School, and at Anderson. Solid educational opportunities are at the heart of each step to prepare our children for the future. It is clear that the school board, administrators, teachers, and staff know the significance of words and their implications. Words matter. Words help guide our imaginations and help build or break our relationships. Words can build a child's self-esteem or send it crashing down in a matter of minutes. Words matter. The one word we debate today matters. It matters how it has been used in the past. It matters how it is used today. We are evaluated by our words and how we use them. I grew up in Oklahoma, near the Cheyenne Ravahoe Indian Reservation. This word was never used or spoken in my house. And just so we're clear, it is never used in polite and civil conversations. But I have heard it used. I have heard it used to bully, intimidate, and humiliate. I heard the word in hushed whispers of hatred in the halls of the school, in grocery store aisles, and in restaurants around town. I have heard it used as a form of entertainment, as if it holds a place of honor, but it does not always represent it. Words matter. The published beliefs of this school district state that, quote, "All persons deserve respect and acceptance of their individuality and diversity," unquote. All persons. This district cannot hold to that stated belief and keep this word as a part of its continued tradition. It is not a word that brings pride and honor to all people. I ask that you honor and respect the individuals and cultures that this word harms. I ask that you honor and respect the individuals and cultures that this word harms.
Mike Raycraft.
Thank you. I'm a 1990 Anderson grad, and also recognized as a distinguished alumni in the Athletic Hall of Fame, so I've invested a lot in being the best Redskins that I could be. However, as a clinical pharmacist and founder of the Testicular Cancer Society, I understand a great deal about cultural sensitivity and inclusion. Since this debate started, I've heard a lot of vitriol. I continuously hear the opposition throwing words around like racist and racism, as I fail to recognize how groups of students, teachers, alumni, self-identifying as Redskins can be defined as such. In medicine, we evaluate risk versus benefit before making interventions in patient care. The members of this committee are tasked with evaluating the risk versus benefits of erasing Redskins not just from my childhood, but from those that have passed before me and from those in the future. I believe the unintended consequences of removing Redskins is far more reaching than you can imagine. For example, I recently spent $20,000 on an event I had with MLB players at Talking Stick Resorts solely because it was on a reservation. But if those on the reservation truly think I'm a racist because I'm an Anderson Redskins, then that location will certainly change. I think similar losses will occur locally with future levies fundraisers and sponsorships. I question if removing Redskins would prove that we're institutionally racist for over 80 years and open us up for future reparations. If your wisdom decides that Redskins needs to be removed, then where should we stop? The Spartans were known to have a state-class of slaves and enrolled boys in military training at the age of seven. Does that make us proud Spartans? Colonel Anderson led the last nom Aran Party against the Indians in Jefferson County, Kentucky, so we need to change the name of our township. In a recent study, 22% of millennials are not sure if they heard of the Holocaust, and only 36% could identify that 6 million Jews were killed. I can only imagine that their knowledge of the plight of Native Americans is even worse. Why don't we work on increasing our knowledge of history instead of erasing it? Please make the right decision and keep the Redskins. Thank you.
Steph Tacey.
Hi. My name is Steph Tacey, and I'm a resident of Anderson. I have three stepsons who all attended school in Anderson, graduating from Anderson High School. I'd like to thank the board and this committee for the hard and valuable work that you are doing at looking at changing the mascot. Chief Seattle, a chief of the Siouxamish and Duamish Native American tribes in the 1800s, once said, "We do not inherit the earth from our ancestors, we borrow it from our children." It is my understanding that Native Americans look forward seven generations when considering important decisions. I'd like to think that this forward-thinking is what this committee and ultimately the board will do by deciding to change the mascot. Anderson High School is an integral part of our community, and we want to continue the high standards and the safe, secure, and inclusive culture as stated in the district's strategic vision. It is my belief, in order to do this, we need to come together as one community, united to support our children so they are best prepared for the future. As our culture continues to change, we must change with it or be left behind. We want our children to be at the forefront, not the back end. The time is ripe for changing Anderson's mascot, both culturally and physically, with the current renovations and the five-year forecast already including items like updating the gym floor and uniforms. However, it is just as important as a united community that we recognize and honor our history in any change made, maybe even with the help of the Anderson Township Historical Society. Our history is and will always be a part of who we were, who we are, and who we will be. I thank you for your time and willingness to listen to my voice and all of the voices who speak tonight.
David Demeo. Dennis Demeo.
What is your real name?
Datello. Datello, I'm sorry. I played football with your husband.
Okay. I'll tell him.
And your brother-in-law.
What's your name, I'm sorry?
Dennis Datillo. Class of 75. And I'm a proud Anderson Redskins. Always will be. If we decide to change this name, we're deciding that for 80 years, we were bad guys. And that's not right. We live right by Maddox. I watched the construction project go on there. No oversight. Anderson High School, same thing. But yet, we want to spend money to change our logo, and it's going to be far more than $600,000. If you ask schools that have done it, they don't do it for that amount of money with a school district the size of ours. I didn't have anything written down, so I just ad-libbed as I came up here. I'm a proud Redskins. I do not want the name changed. And it's a sad state that this is what we're concerned about, is changing our name with the construction in such disarray. Thank you very much.
Lester Tacey.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting us talk tonight, I appreciate that. My name is Les Tacey, I'm the proud parent of three graduates of Anderson High School, and I'm also a retired school administrator. I was the assistant superintendent of Northwest Schools, and I oversaw the business affairs there, and so I want to bring that angle to my few words this evening by saying that this appears to be possibly the ideal time to make the switch. Costs are already planned associated with any mascot images for the school facility. Putting a new mascot in place would help avoid additional costs down the road. In addition, other costs such as replacement of uniforms and equipment are just part of the normal cost of doing business and can be facilitated by accelerating some of those costs in that five-year forecast and in the budget planning that goes on. Just like textbooks and technology are changed on a routine basis, so are uniforms and equipment. Perhaps this is the best time in considering all the situations we have at hand. So, when considering all of this, from my perspective as a school administrator, as well as a parent, and your neighbor, and your neighbor and friend, I would say that I do support the change, and I would encourage those that are involved with the transition to look at the way Goshen, Indiana, transitioned this, because they were able to find a way to honor the past, honor the past Redskins was their mascot, as well as to move forward into the future. So it can actually be a win-win for everybody. This can be something that we can be proud of doing, honoring the past, moving forward into the future in a positive direction. Thank you.
Susan Datillo. You may not get another chance. Okay. Cheryl Martin.
Stanford Naval Academy, Air Force Academy, Duke, Notre Dame, William &amp; Mary, UVA, Carnegie Mellon, Vanderbilt. This is just a very small sampling of colleges that students from Anderson consistently have been accepted to and attend. I mention this because the last two meetings I've heard a committee member use a statement that I deem a scare tactic and a completely [BLEEP] statement that our students may be discriminated against because of our symbol, the Redskins. There is not one place on any application that asks, "What is your school logo?" The above schools also answer another concern a committee member expressed. Does this logo affect the education of our students? I will let the facts speak for themselves in the case of our Redskins students. 19 merit scholars, six years top high school in nation by Newsweek, 98 advanced placement scholars, many students accepted to top colleges. How many school districts can boast those kind of numbers? Do you still think a symbol is keeping our students from learning? I have also heard members say they can't believe people won't vote for a levy if the Redskins name is changed. I ask, when a representative is voted in, they are voted in with the expectation that they will be the voice of the majority. They will vote the way the majority of their constituents want them to vote, not what their personal feelings are. What other form of recourse do citizens have if we don't have the power of the vote? My husband is a Native American, a member of the Kickapoo Tribe, McLeod, Oklahoma. McLeod High School, supported by the Kickapoo Tribe, voted 3 to nothing 2 and 1/2 years ago to keep their high school Redskins name. Yes, our kids are tribe members under their dad. They attend Anderson. We moved here, when we moved here, we picked Anderson because of the Redskins name. I urge you, please keep the Redskins name and let our township be the leader in education and celebration.
Robert Lamb.
Thank you. I'm Bob Lamb. I live in the Forest Hills School District, and my granddaughter, who I'm helping raise, attends elementary school in the district. This past Friday, I was looking at the email announcements from her school and saw a link for a summer basketball camp, which I was interested in having her attend because everybody in my family loves basketball. The first thing I saw when I opened the link was 2018 Lady Redskins Youth Basketball Camp. I closed the link and later had a long talk with my granddaughter about why she couldn't go to that camp. For me, this question is simple. The current name refers to the skin of a group of people who were historically abused and oppressed by the United States. That group of people still exists, and many still suffer the consequences of that treatment. So of course, the name has the power to offend, whether it's intended to offend or not. It not only has the power, it does offend. It offends me. It offends many other residents and graduates of this district, and it offends many living Native Americans, including those who actually live in this school district today. So how can we possibly keep it? How many more residents are going to have to make a choice like I made on Friday? Instead of fighting over a mascot, let's be proud of Anderson High School's history, of Anderson High School's achievements in academics and sports, and let's also be proud of its abilities to grow, to learn, and to change when it is right to change. Thank you.
Sean Schaefer.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome. Hey, everyone. My name is Sean Schaefer. I'm captain of the Anderson Redskins football team. I'm also a national merit scholar, and I know everyone's not used to exactly seeing a student come up here and talk, and I know a lot of people draw that to conclude that students must not really care about the issue all that much, but I just wanted to go up and say that that's definitely not the case. For instance, the day this was first announced that they were thinking of changing the school was crazy. They even had to come on the announcements and tell everyone to try to settle down and stay calm throughout the day. And I can honestly say that, sure, there are people who are against it, but the vast majority is for keeping the name. And when people ask why people don't come to the meetings, their answer is usually because I don't think what I say will matter when I actually come here. And they say, if people already know about the 2016 Washington Post poll where 9 out of 10 Native Americans said they weren't offended by the name, if everyone hears all the research that Coach Andy Wolfe has given time after time again when confronted with the subject, and seen how many Native American groups are for keeping the name, and they still have a debate about it, then there's nothing much I can say. And that's why a lot of students don't want to come, even though a lot of them support it. But I came here hoping that people still are listening to our side, because I think we all know what Redskins means, and a Redskins is a valiant, noble warrior who fights for his community and does what is right. And really, what I've been saying this entire time is, this world needs a lot more Redskins, not for them to be taken away.
Kane Nappi.
I didn't get that right, did I?
You did.
Oh.
Good evening. My name is Katie Nappi. I'm a 13-year resident of Anderson Township. I live on the Anderson side of the school district, and I have three school-aged children. The future is here, it's just not evenly distributed. This quote from William Gibson is fitting for the change that our school board and community are considering this evening. The future of the Redskins name is already here. Community after community across the country has dropped the Redskins name from their high school sports teams out of respect for the growing chorus of Native American voices speaking out against a term that represents a harmful stereotype and racial slur. Since 1990, 44 high schools have dropped the Redskins name, representing nearly half of all high schools in the US that have ever used the name. 13 high schools have dropped the name since 2013. 49 high schools continue to use the Redskins name, including Anderson High School. Many of these schools, like our own, are actively debating dropping the name. These debates are passionate and difficult. They are also costly and time-consuming for our community. But the future is clear. We can continue investing precious community resources in this debate, or we can embrace the future now. Society changes, and the symbols need to change with it. Let's retire the Redskins name and embrace the opportunity to move forward with the name we can all be proud of, through a process that engages and brings our community together. I hope the board will embrace the future and start a new tradition for Anderson High School. Thank you.
William J. DeVore III. I'm just reading the name.
The only one that called me that was my mother and my call. William DeVore, Forest Hills School District resident and a very proud Anderson High School Redskins, class of 1984. As you all see here tonight, is a result of consequences. For every action, there is a reaction. A few weeks ago, a couple of young people came to this board meeting dragging a news camera crew with them. They spoke about how offensive and embarrassing our proud Anderson Redskins mascot is. And those words matter. For those words... For those words have created a reaction. And I am hopeful for those young people. I hope they can find some true education about the proud Redskins name. Being involved with such an educated and dedicated Save Our Redskins group, I was shocked to learn that there is such a small amount of Native American history taught in the Forest Hills School District. I now can understand why these young people spoke from ignorance, not being well-educated about Native Americans and the origin of the Redskins name. This area is so rich in Native American history. Growing up here, me and my dad and my little brother would roam the freshly plowed fields along the little Miami River, searching for Indian arrowheads. They were a prize to find. My little brother was so intrigued with Indian history, he eventually discovered an Indian burial mound off a four-mile road. It overlooked the Ohio River. A beautiful sight, it was undisturbed. My brother later went off to serve, twenty-four years distinguished service in the United States Coast Guard. He was gone and a developer bought the property and discovered the burial site. It was excavated by Natural History Museum. A monument now stands there. Walking distance from my house in Newtown, there was a Han Indian village. It is believed over thirty thousand Indians lived there. That village has been excavated and studied many times. Newtown's old firehouse now is a Native American museum along with the town hall, celebrating and educating people of the rich American history in this area. Committee members, Redskins, but educate our children about the true meaning of a proud Native American Redskins. The material and resources are right under our feet.
It's your time we're taking up. If you want to be able to talk, you got to follow the rules and stick to the time limits. I said, stick to the time limits. It's your time that we're using here tonight. He speaks more.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Nancy Brown, and I'm a twenty-nine-year resident of Anderson Township. I stand in favor of changing the current Anderson High School mascot for the following reasons. First, it's the right thing to do. All of us want to feel comfortable ourselves and with neighbors, workers, family members, and visitors of all ethnicities, all races, all cultural backgrounds. Changing the mascot is a step in the right direction. Keeping the current mascot name delays this chance for inclusive progress. Secondly, words do matter, as this button indicates. Words impact the thinking and hence the actions of the speaker or writer and of the listener or reader. Although the conscious intent of naming our teams the Redskins may have been benign, the impact is not benign. The impact is to reinforce inaccurate and demeaning images of Native Americans. We owe making this change to our children and ourselves. Third, it's time. It's past time. This issue will not go away. As Katie Nappi said and Sue Woods said earlier, the trend is, um, growing increasingly in the direction of dropping the name Redskins. Between 1988 and 2013, twenty-eight schools in eighteen states dropped the name, at the rate of about one a year. In the four years after 2013, thirteen schools dropped the name Redskins. That's at the rate of three years.
Hi. My name is Zoe Johnson. I'm a freshman at Anderson, and, um, I don't know if you noticed by my skin color or my hair, I'm actually, um, mixed. I'm a person of color, so. And I'm not a person of, um, of a certain time. I'm a person of this time, so I'm very happy to say that I'm in support of keeping our mascot. Both my mom and my uncle attended and graduated Anderson, so the pride of the Redskins is running my family since day one. At Anderson, we're a family, a group of hard-working, amazing teachers, staff, and students who work together each and every day to better our education, even though that might be a little tough with the wires hanging from the ceilings or the mice running around on the floors. Throughout this process, I've learned a lot about Native American history. And as my friend Monica said before me, the name of the state Oklahoma actually translates to red people, as named by the Choctaw Chief of the area. Should Oklahoma have to change their name just because it may offend a few people? Let's educate our students and our community so we can learn more about our name and take ownership of it. There's an organization called NAGA, who is a group of Native Americans whose goal is to educate and preserve Native American history and to end the assault on Native American imagery such as our logo and name. We should have students work with groups like NAGA so we can educate ourselves. If words truly matter, let's embrace our name and be leaders in the movement of educating about Native Americans instead of letting our native people be erased and minimized. Let knowledge empower us. It's very easy to call someone a racist or a bigot, but what's harder is digging below the surface to reveal the truth. And the truth is that our native brothers and sisters are being erased, erased from our culture, erased from our society, and erased from our history books. Let's not forget about them. If this is truly about the children, the students, like you say it is, you should listen to us, because the majority of the students want to keep this name, because we are very, very proud to be Redskins.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Hi. My name is Chris Miller. This is good. Um, I've lived in Anderson Township for thirty years. I have three children, two of whom have graduated from Forest Hills Schools and one who's a freshman. I grew up in Wisconsin. As a child, we told Polack jokes. I didn't know what a Polack was, but I knew it was a derogatory name. I later learned that it was a demeaning ma- name for people of Polish ancestry. This was a shock to me, especially since my best friend was Patty Schfransky. We called each other sisters. Even our Barbies were best friends. I couldn't use that term anymore because Patty was my friend. I later learned that we're all connected. A strong society values all members, gaining because no one is left out or marginalized. That's an ideal that's vital to our children, that we're all important and expected to contribute, a value our school district promotes. With the goal of a strong, inclusive school district, I urge you to adopt a name for a mascot that uplifts values to inspire our children. I'm very grateful that education is part of the plan to adopt a new mascot. It helped me to learn and understand.
Hi. My name's Regina Barton, and I'm a 2016 graduate of Anderson High School. Not once while I was in high school did the Redskins logo hinder my ability to focus on my education. In fact, the collective identity it creates, and I hope to con- it will continue to create among students, is one that fostered a culture in which students were able to grow. It's not hard to argue that the Redskins logo has been at the forefront of excellence for over eighty years. This long tradition of excellence is entrenched in our community and makes us stronger. Many teachers and coaches that I had while I was at Anderson were Redskins themselves. As a student, it was amazing to share a common bond and rich tradition with these role models. The vast majority of Anderson students, while I was in high school, were proud to be Redskins. Now, I want to make a comparison to another high school that also has the Redskins logo. Nearly every student at Red Mesa High School in Arizona belongs to the Navajo Nation. Their mascot, the Redskins. They, just like Anderson students, are proud to be Redskins. They reject that as a racial slur and have become a large proponent for keeping the term. One hundred fifty students and faculty even made the trip to Washington, into Washington, D.C. to support the Washington Redskins. Red Mesa's student body and community also share another similarity with our community. They believe there are more important things to worry about. Twenty-eight point three percent of native, the native population live in Poppy, and sixty percent of the country's largest Indian reservation are unemployed. Because of this, the outgoing president of the Navajo Nation, Ben Shelley, deemed the controversy a non-issue, and his advisor said changing a mascot's name is not going to produce one job in the Navajo Nation. Now, let's take a look at our community. Changing Anderson's logo is not going to make finishing the renovations at Anderson or the other schools any easier. It's not going to make increasing security in schools or adding additional resource officers any easier, and it's certainly not going to make our community stronger. Just look at the division it's created. We're literally divided in the room. Um, with this, I urge you to keep the Redskins respectful tradition Anderson has upheld for eighty years. Keep the Redskins.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing people the opportunity to speak today. I do apologize, I am a bit under the weather. Um, my name is Jayden, and I'm currently a sophomore at Anderson. With full certainty in my heart, I can tell you that the racist Redskins must go. If there's so much talk of change, or we have to have several committees over the course of decades, isn't it a time that we realize that the people are asking for something to be done? We cannot be such, we cannot be a school with such great grades, activities, wonderful test scores, sports teams, and yet have such a racist name that is so hard to represent? If you as the keepers, if your minds are so closed, then why are your mouths so open? I just don't understand sometimes. Now, to rebuttal that, there's often a sense of pride and attachment with a school mascot. It's, it can be found at any high school, middle school, or elementary school. It, it makes sense, but it's not, it's that we fail to realize that the Redskins is simply a racist name, and that we need a way to represent our school with pride and all the while being respectful to all. In conclusion, I want to say that I will not stay silent so that you can stay comfortable. It is time. The racist Redskins must go, and change starts with us as the students.
My name is Denise Mayer, and I am a thirty-five-year resident and taxpayer in Anderson Township and mother of three Anderson graduates. At the Forest Hills School Board meeting of April twenty-third, we witnessed all of the wonderful people who are making such a difference in the lives of our children in Forest Hills. The staff, volunteers, and students are to be commended. For that, we are all grateful and excited. That is why we passed the levy, and that is why we support our Forest Hills Schools. Someone from the panel was overheard at the end of the public commentary part of the meeting saying that none of the speakers during the logo discussion mentioned education. I have to agree that unfortunately, nothing about the name change saga seems to be focused on our children. They are not pulled as to what they think or they want. They are asked to go to school in a construction zone where they are getting sick from mice scat that is atomized in the air ducts and the dust is swirling. This is not in any way the fault of the amazing staff at Anderson, who are doing everything they can under extremely difficult conditions, even teaching in the halls when necessary, and in some cases, getting sick themselves. My granddaughter has asthma and hasn't needed a nebulizer in years until this past school year at Anderson. Who knows what the long-term effects of this exposure will do to the students? We, as taxpayers, voted to pass a very large levy. For many, this has been a huge burden, especially for younger parents and especially for residents on fixed incomes. Now, this logo change is being proposed again for an estimated, God knows, maybe a million, maybe so, I don't know, with a twenty percent cost overrun on the projected budget for Anderson High School, a texting lawsuit, and health issues, just when are we going to focus on the students and their education? When there is no money, vital programs, new hires, and much-needed support staff are eliminated. Again, who is considering the students? When are we going to be more focused on safety, substance abuse, and the mental health of our students? In my opinion, the decision to keep the Redskins name or to change it, considering the huge costs, should reside with people who are registered taxpayers in a ballot initiative. Unfortunately, this will become a-
So I want to thank the board for the transparency in making this decision, and I wanted to thank the committee for the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, you got me to my first school board meeting, so I appreciate that, too. Um, I'm an Anderson Township resident. I graduated from Anderson in nineteen ninety-nine. I attended Air Elementary. I went to preschool at the corner of Forest and Beachmont. Uh, I have two young boys, one at Wilson and one soon to follow. I share all of this so that you know that I am, I have a vested interest, basically. Among your binders of correspondence, you already have my opinion on the name and why it should change, so tonight I'd like to share two facts. First, if the name does not change, this will come up again. Perceptions change and evolve. So much has changed in the nineteen years since I graduated, in the years since this was last taken up by the board. So much has changed in the last year alone. This will come up again with increasing frequency, causing disruption and distraction for students and the board, drawing unwanted attention to our community. That is a fact. Second, if the name does change, there will be a cost. The cost can be defrayed or diluted, but there will be a cost. And every year we wait, and each further investment we make in the name, the more that cost will increase. By the virtue of placing this on the agenda for 2018, the board recognizes that this is the best opportunity financially to make that change. That, too, is a fact. With all the opinions you'll hear this evening, I hope you'll take these facts into consideration, and I hope you'll make the right decision for the district and the students this year. In my opinion, it couldn't happen soon enough.
Wow. So little time, so much to go over. One or two minutes is not a lot of time to defend something that's been in effect for almost ninety years. I graduated from Anderson High School in nineteen and fifty-five. I went from there from kindergarten through to the twelfth grade, when Beachmont was too late. Is there anybody here that old, that's ninety years old? No, no, I don't see a single hand. Think about that. You are trying to eradicate and erase something that's been in existence for almost ninety years. There, okay, think about it, yeah. In the state of Ohio, there's eleven other schools with Redskins, seventy-six other schools with Indian- schools with Indian names such as Red Men Warriors, Abatis, Warhawks, Arrows, Blackhawks, Chieftains, just to name a few. Indian names are everywhere. Major corporations, national sports franchises, major universities across the country. Mutual of Omaha Insurance uses an Indian. Chicago Blackhawks hockey team in Chicago. The Florida State University has a horse that runs on there, and a stick of flaming spear into the football field. Nobody's ashamed of that. Nobody's ashamed of that. Indian names are everywhere. Major corporations, from Tecumseh Engines, Yokohama Tire, Calumet Baking Powder, Subi Honey, Jeep Cherokee. Some of you probably came tonight in a Jeep Cherokee. I hope you're not ashamed. I went to the Board of Education Needing Office the other day. I walked in, and in, they got a beautiful bunch of pictures in there. And, and the pictures are Harold Maddox, who they named a school after. Harold Maddox was a teacher of mine. There was Mr. Brown.
Mr. Clark, thank you. Your time is up.
My time is up. Well, like I said, go Redskins! Go Redskins! All right, young man, I also played football there, too.
Nora Meyer and Kyle DeBry.
It might be DeBry. Sorry. The fifth is the Derby. I just, that's what I saw. Hello, I'm Kyle DeBry.
I'm Nora Meyer.
We were the twenty-fifteen and twenty-sixteen Belledictorians of Anderson High School, and I'm going to start off by saying that I really, really liked my time at Anderson. I was the drum major of the marching band. I've played the fight song hundreds of times, and I've conducted the alma mater after football games. I've had a lot of success in college, and a lot of that is due to the great teachers that I had at Anderson, so I really enjoyed my time here. However, I'm not proud of the offensive mascot that Anderson has, and I'm especially not proud that Anderson is first and foremost a school, but when I graduated, I had no idea anything about the Redskins or the fact that this is offensive. I was never taught anything about our mascot. No Native Americans ever came to class to educate us about this, and this does not sound to me like we're honoring this tradition. When Anderson was founded in nineteen thirty-six, it was not founded with honor in mind.
I think we should ask ourselves in ten years, when the new set of students inherit Anderson High School, if they will be proud to call themselves Redskins, because I speak for Kyle and I when I say that we won't, and you won't see us wearing Anderson Redskins stuff. You won't see it on our resume. You won't see us at football games dressed up in paraphernalia. And I think it's important that we set a precedence and be on the right side of history, because in ten years, I can guarantee you, you will be in this exact room, having this exact discussion, and you don't want to find yourselves with a court order down the road telling you that you have to change it. Nobody wants that. Anyways, thank you. I hope you consider changing it.
Julie Morton.
Good evening. I speak tonight as a taxpayer representing the multiple elderly neighbors that I have, all over eighty-five. They've approached me regarding the keep the Redskins name yard sign I have. You know, it's pretty comical. We just saw a snippet of the gentleman, two speakers ahead of me. They're pretty comical people. I hear, "That's stupid. That's BS." But they're not using the letters BS, they're using the words. These are the same elderly neighbors that have told my kids not to cuss in the front yard when the ball runs in front of the court. But they have to question, how does this help our students? How does this help our children? What is it educating? We're spending all this time and energy on a name instead of putting that time and energy into the building of Anderson, which is a mess right now. My daughter just came back from Live Oaks, fourth quarter. She's had two asthma attacks, and she's been back in three weeks. Today, I almost had to take her to the ER for breathing treatment. That's what we need to focus on, not a name, not something that's been around for eighty-five, ninety years. But how do we educate our children? That's the focus. The name changers will say it will come up again. We have the power, as a community, to say no, thank you, once and for all. Our elderly neighbors need us to support the kids, not a name.
Dr. Frances Collins. C. Danae Riggs. Mary Pember.
Oujanin, I ask that you show some respect and be quiet while I speak, just the same way that I've been quiet while the rest of you folks have spoken. I think that would be quite decent. My name is Mary Pember. I'm a twenty-year resident of Anderson. I'm a homeowner and a taxpayer. My children attend school at Forest Hills, and my daughter graduated from Anderson. Just, we are members of the federally recognized tribe, Red Cliff Band of Ojibwe of Wisconsin. Just as a matter of record, we are not feeling honored by the term, by the R-word. We're not feeling it at my house. If you folks decide to keep it, so be it, and we'll be fine. We'll be fine at my house. We're always fine at my house. We're fine because we're strong Ojibwe people. We're strong in our language, we're strong in our culture, and we're strong in who we are. And the reason that we're strong is because we have to be. Because we have to be to bear the kind of microaggressions. Some of them are micro, some are perhaps more macro, particularly when they shout in your face, about from people who really have very limited understanding or exposure or education regarding native peoples. I would offer a suggestion and a request. If you do decide to continue the use of the R-word, would you please make some of the spirit ware available without the R-word on it? My children would like to, you know, celebrate their participation in the school, and we don't care to have that word in our homes. We also wonder if you could, if there could be some refrain from keeping it, and I'm asking you to please be quiet. I'm asking that if there could be like a refrain from having it emblazoned on all of the educational materials, because it's my understanding it's more of a term that's associated with athletics. If people are really truly interested in honoring native people, I have a number of suggestions I would be most happy to speak to you about. For instance, Native American people in this country have a regard...
Thank you.
Nope, all right, thank you.
My name is David Pensak. I'm a member of the nineteen eighty-six class and one of five children who attended Anderson High School. In those twenty years, I've never experienced any negative words or actions on account of the AHS Redskins nickname or logo. Local education, common sense have always viewed this name, logo with dignity and respect from who it was derived, the Native Americans who once occupied these great lands. Eighty years of pride, eighty years of local residents, faculty, staff, and thousands of students have honored and valued our local history. It is our history and what makes us who we are. Eighty years of local businesses supporting our boosters, and our school reiterate this. While attempting to whitewash our local history, tradition, and identity is nothing more than political correctness gone amok. History doesn't change, yet there's, yet there are those who seek to destroy our history and our identity as a nation. Where will this political correctness movement stop? Use this moment to teach the students that the word Redskins is embraced by the Native Americans, which reflects their honor, integrity, pride, and our respect. Keep the AHS Redskins name and logo. I feel that history is on our side. Thank you.
Skylar Falcons.
Hello, my name's Skylar. I graduated at Anderson in two thousand and eleven, and I support change. I'm proud of the education that I received at Anderson. And aren't we all here because we love the school? I think we should keep that in mind going forward. We all love Anderson. Now, I'm an educator myself, and I work with sixteen-to-twenty-one-year-olds at a dropout prevention school. There, I have met many students with different backgrounds than myself, and on occasion, I have said or done something that has offended someone. Now, if I had done the same thing in my own circle of peers, it probably would have gone unnoticed. But these students with unique backgrounds were able to tell me how in their life, certain things were less acceptable. I could have gotten defensive, and I wanted to. I wanted to say that that's not what I meant, and you're taking it the wrong way. But instead, I listened to their frustrations and learned to see things through the eyes of others. I think the same thing goes for the word at hand today. I know that not all people, even not all Native Americans, find the word offensive. But shouldn't it still be an issue if there are those out there that do find the word hurtful? At Anderson, I was taught that every voice matters, not just the majority, and I want the same to be true today. I ask you, the leaders of this committee, to lead by example. Let us not erase history, but make it. Change the logo, and let's work with the students on picking a new tradition that we all can share. Thank you.
John Metterer.
Thank you. Nineteen eighty-three, Anderson Redskins graduate. My son, two thousand and sixteen, Anderson Redskins graduate. My daughter will graduate in a couple of weeks as an Anderson Redskins graduate. My entire life has been spent in this community. My business, the way I make my livelihood, is bringing people to this community. And not one time has anybody ever said, "Nope, Redskins offensive, we're not coming." Not one time has anybody said to me, "We're not doing business with you because you are an Anderson Redskin." What's important here is the education our kids get. Identifying with this community, this high school, this logo. Right now, I have two children that will be in private universities next year. So contrary to what was said at other meetings about not getting into schools, it being a problem, both of my students will be on full tuition scholarships. That's because of the education they got. They are proud to be Redskins. I am proud to be Redskins. I married a Turpin Spark. Guess what she did for the last six years? Anderson Redskins booster president for two years, vice president for two years, volunteer for two years. She's not offended. Neither should you be. This is about getting our house in order, cleaning up this school, getting the construction done, focusing on education, and not wasting money we do not have. We may have it in the future. We may revisit this again. Now is not the time. The time will come. You put it to a vote. Let the public decide, because we are a republic. We vote. We don't push things through just because it's our agenda. That's what needs to happen. That's your responsibility. We voted for you. You need to listen.
Trisha Rhoad.
Hello, my name is Trisha Rhoad. I'm a twenty-year resident of Anderson. I'm speaking on behalf of Kristy Berghausen, class of two thousand. My name is Kristy Berghausen. I attended Maddox and Anderson. I am proud of the public education I received. I am not proud to be a Redskins. Words matter. The words we use around our children matter most. Using the word Redskins communicates that Anderson is out of touch and insensitive. Intention doesn't matter, but our choice of words does. Other people don't hear your intention, they hear an ugly word. As a mother, my job is to raise my kids to be thoughtful, kind, and conscientious contributors to society. The Redskins mascot is keeping Anderson from doing this. Ray Halbrother, tribal leader of the United Nations, said it best. "No poll in the world is going to change the fact that Redskins is a dictionary-defined slur that our people are subjected to on a daily basis." Every major organization in the United States representing Native Americans has called for the name to change. I don't have time to flesh it out in this two-minute speech, but there is substantial evidence that the Washington Post poll is extremely flawed. For that one poll, there are at least five other very carefully constructed studies that conclude the term Redskins is harmful to native communities. This really isn't debatable. This also isn't about history, pride, or tradition. It's about our children now and our incredible responsibility for their education. The word is much bigger than Anderson. Our children need to understand this, and apparently so do many of us. We have this golden opportunity to send our kids a powerful message that Anderson is a strong community that steps up to take responsibility for its actions and extends kindness and compassion toward our fellow human beings. Isn't this the kind of world we all want for our children? Thank you.
David Hyfield. David Hyfield. Sammy Travis.
I'm a senior, graduating May twenty-seventh at NKU. One year after my brother, thirty-one years after my father, forty-nine years after a regular I see all the time at Frish's. I am a proud Anderson Redskins, but this year, I became a freshman again. I didn't know where classes were. The building was a mess. Y'all remember when you drove by the building and we didn't have a wall in the science wing? Mice got in. One fell through the ceiling a few weeks ago. There have been roaches in there since I was a freshman. Tiles fell in an art classroom. It almost destroyed ceramics projects. I am an art student myself. I would have been devastated if that was my work. Why is it that the mascot is more important than the building right now? It is nowhere close to being done. You saw how Wilson was destroyed and rebuilt in a summer? Why is Anderson the farthest behind? I'm sick and tired of walking through the halls and getting dust on my feet, barely able to breathe. able to breathe. I see classrooms a mess. Every teacher is having to pack up their stuff once again, hardest for the art and science teachers. They have to pack it all up, put it away, and it might get lost. It might get destroyed. But we're focusing on a mascot, spending more money than we have right now because of a mascot. I'm a proud Anderson Redskins. I'm a student. This does not need to be our focus right now. Our focus is a good building for every student. Please let us finish this before we focus on a mascot. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been really enlightening. Sincerely, thank you. And thank you, I don't want your jobs. I'm a proud parent of three daughters who graduated from Anderson High School. This is part of a letter that our daughter Ariel, who cannot be here this evening, wrote to the school board. She says, "I graduated from Anderson High School in 2005. I was lucky enough to have Mr. Clutter as an English teacher. Timothy Clutter died on April 17th. This is a man who helped us understand that there is meaning behind every word, that every communication is everywhere, and that whoever is receiving the communication is the one whose interpretation gets voiced, who has the obligation to dissect the language of the past and determine what it might mean in the present day or in the future. Through fiction and nonfiction, I learned to see the world through other people's eyes. I learned to have empathy for those around me. Mr. Clutter took it even further. He insisted that we question, critique, interpret, and make words our own, even if those words were the celebrated words of Dickens, Shakespeare, or Euripides. He encouraged us to see the story through our own eyes and draw our own conclusions. I know that some of you think the meaning behind the "R-word" is pride, is honor, is flattering. It's not. As a white thirty-something woman, I don't have to tell you that again. Others with more direct experience have told you this already. What I do want to say is that I'm angry. I'm angry that you would use a word defined as a racial slur to try and represent me. I ran track. I ran cross-country. They called me the "R-word" on my uniform. I'm sure you think I should get over it. I'm sure you think I should be proud, but I'm not. I'm embarrassed that in 2018, you're claiming that this is an honorific. Your students are asking for change. Your students have been taught that words matter. Your students have been taught that the world is about more than just our own limited points of view. Please make a change. Thank you."
Not the singer. I know.
Oh, this has been one heck of a night. I'd never been more proud of my daughter until tonight. You know, I had to sit there and put myself in opposition shoes to see their point of view. It was probably the hardest thing I ever did. I'm class of eighty-seven, and I listened to you guys. I don't listen to you guys now, but not one person has ever said they've used a Redskins name in a derogatory manner. No one has ever done it. Not one person up here has heard anybody in the school or in this township say, "We're using it in a terrible way." They're saying that we represent racism. We have... Why should we keep a Redskins name? Honor, tradition, loyalty, and respect. I was in Army for twelve years, Eighty-second Airborne, Hundred First Airborne. We have Apache helicopters, Black Hawk helicopters, Kiowa Comanches. We use it for honor, respect, and pride. I think we should actually make it personal criteria. We should make it part of Anderson High School to bring the American Native history to our schools and educate our kids on how they live, where they live, and when they live. Why don't we actually bring tribes to our school every three years so we can personally be educated by them and understand them? Like I said, this is such a hard subject, and I don't know, I don't want to give anybody anything. I'm disrespecting them, but wow. If it's that bad in the community, move! Pack your stuff up and get it! And for the board, just remember this. When it comes time for the levees... No, I'm suggesting. I didn't say. I suggested you can move. But, thank you. But for the board members, I mean, it's so hard for you guys, and I really do. This is probably going to be the hardest decision you guys have ever made right now. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I stand up here and I look around me, and I see a community of people who care so, so much. I graduated from Anderson in 2003. I am four generations of my family are Anderson graduates, are in the Anderson district. In this room today, a good friend from kindergarten, a family that was so influential in my life when I was in high school, my best friend in the entire world, my grandmother, who I will note is sitting on the side, and one of my best friends from high school. And this is, to me, not so much about the past... And my uncle! Hi, Uncle! I didn't know you were there. This, to me, is not so much about the past, but about setting our students up powerfully for the future. And I don't... I'm a little confused, I guess, in some of this conversation, because I don't understand why we can't preserve our tradition and keep all of that sound, and I can't still be proud to be a Redskins while ushering in a conversation and a true education that says that this name, it might be time that it changes. I don't know how we can eradicate, or how we can, pardon me, educate and not eradicate. What position are we putting our teachers in to have to teach about what has happened, to what the Native American experience is, and then to have to justify this term? Also, I work in media, and it is a big part of what's happening in this world today that the loudest sometimes wins. And I gotta say to all of the students that sometimes just because the facts are out there doesn't necessarily mean they're the only ones. And I think that we need to look at hearing all of the facts from both sides, and just keep in mind one thing, that as these guys are graduating and launching them out into the world, that we aren't... They don't just graduate here, but we want to be ready for the community. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
First of all, I would like to thank the board. This is the second time I've been to a meeting. Last time I was at a meeting was 1999, and both my boys were still in school. My oldest was graduating that year. There's been some great speeches on both sides. The lady, the young lady who just talked, that was wonderful. I believe that. I haven't heard what's been going on with the schools. I know they're all rebuilding or have been rebuilt, but man, this is embarrassing as hell for you people to let this school where these students are going to be in this bad a shape. I'm sorry. I apologize. You know, but this is something else. This is terrible. I mean, my goodness. What has taken so long? I'm sorry to say things like that, but like I said, I've only been here, you know, two meetings, and I've lived up here for forty years, and this is embarrassing. I'm a Redskins. I've lived up here for forty years, and I believe in Redskins. I went to Purcell. I was a Cavalier. What's gonna happen with that? The other thing I was looking at, I'm staring at this name, Nighthawks. That's wonderful. What happens when somebody wants to change it to Dayhawks? Are you going to change it? Just out there, just wondering. I want to thank everybody who gave speeches on both sides. It takes a lot of nerve to get up here and say this. Thank you to the board. Andy, thank you very much for everything you've done, for my boys, all the coaches, my kids. I have all the respect in the world. My kids are my great... They are very, very successful because of the coaches of Anderson Redskins. So that's the reason my boys are successful. Thank you, thank you, guys. Thank you, Andy.
This will be our last speaker.
It's not the lottery. Of course it is. Hi, my name's Teresa Robinson, and what an honor to be here. Thank you very much. This is a community that cares. I've been here twenty-three years, and you do care. And you know the thing that's really cool? We can have Anderson pride, and words do matter. And I don't think anyone in Anderson means the Redskins should be a derogatory term. Absolutely not. I believe that, and I absolutely trust your decision. Also, like I just, I trust the decision. When my three children, I have three daughters, we were on Target, and there was a young lady who was talking with her friend, and she said, "Hey, you faggot! Get over here, you big fag!" Well, you may not know, but I'm lesbian. Now, if I were a black woman, she would not have said the N-word in front of me. That would be disrespectful. But she didn't know. And the word "faggot" rolled right off her lips as if it were nothing. And so I wonder... So I said, "Ma'am, do you know the history of this word?" She said, "No, I don't." I said, "Well, in about the thirteenth or fourteenth century, when people, they didn't understand about people, if they were gay or if they were witches, we had a solution. We burned them at stake." She couldn't understand what the connection was. And I said, "Well, when you take a bundle of sticks, you want to really get fire. That bundle of sticks is called a faggot." And over the years, when you're in Europe, a cigarette is referred to as a fag. So you see how a word can rotate through time, and it can have this meaning? And this girl, no more meant to hurt me than anyone with a proud heritage of Redskins, means to hurt anyone. But if you don't know, you don't know. Thank you.
We had a two-hour hard stop. We've gone two more. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I really appreciate everybody being respectful. We haven't yet set the next meeting. We'll do so. It'll be publicized. Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening.